Welcome this evening, and it is now seven o'clock. We'll begin our meeting. We'll call to show that four of our board members are present, and Mr. Thorndisco is joining us electronically. And our district representative, Emma, is excused this evening. I invite you to the stand and join in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Royal College Center, and to the Union of American Airlines, and to the United States of America.
So if we begin tonight's meeting, I invite Ms. Mizik to share some conclusions.
The Greendale High School marching band participated in Nationals in Indianapolis over the weekend, completing their solar ninety bands from across the country. The band placed tenth in their division. The performance was a strong final performance for the 2009 season. In December, the band will travel to Pasadena to participate in the Rose Parade on January first, 2020. On Saturday, board members interviewed several search firms for the superintendent replacement process in a special meeting. Elementary students participated in various activities in honor of Veterans Day on the month of November. At Canterbury, fourth graders had a visit for Medal of Honor recipient Gary Wetzel, grandfather of a Canterbury student, who spoke in honor of Veterans Day. Fourth and fifth grade students placed American flags donated by the Greendale VFW at the New Greendale Veterans Memorial to honor our veterans. Fifth grade students at Highland U listened to stories and watched the flag folding ceremony by members of the American Legion, code 416. And at College Park, students created notes of thanks for Veterans Day current service people to add to candy collected for our troops. This fall, students participated in an after collectively called Club Keestrup. Students had fun building freestanding structures or completing challenges using legos. Challenges included designing a boat that floats, a vehicle that moves, and a creation that completes a zip line. Sixth graders visited the Harbor Village residence in November, sharing time and reading with older adults. The sources of strength of care leaders at Greendale High School are continuing to work on their Where We Belong campaign. DHS students created feathers to promote their personal strengths. The group visited Highland U and College Park students to share a story and the Where We Belong message around the importance of acceptance and belonging. A parent information meeting about academic and career planning will be held tomorrow, November nineteenth, at the middle school, beginning at six p.m. And finally, there will be no school on November twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth for the Thanksgiving break.
Thank you. I also want to share a little bit of communication, having received some emails and phone calls from residents. And on behalf of the Board of Education, I wanted to clarify some questions that have been asked by community members recently regarding the resignation of Dr. Gary Kiltz. The board requested Dr. Kiltz's resignation and repayment of the funds he charged to the district so that the district could part ways and be repaid quickly. Both were accomplished when the board approved his resignation October twenty-eighth and when the school district received a cashier's check for the repayment on November fifth. As superintendent, Dr. Kiltz had a two-year employment contract through June of 2021. Had the board pursued his criminal investigation, he likely would have been placed on paid minimum pay of leave until the conclusion of that investigation, and he would have collected his salary for a longer period than when he resigned in October. Additionally, it is important to the board that the school district would repay, and that repayment has already occurred. Having pursued the criminal investigation, repayment would have weighted into a conviction and courtary restitution. There have also been questions regarding the travel charges on his credit card provided to community members who have opened records with us. Although some of this travel, which we have previously acknowledged was for personal travel, there are district-led travel charges that were incurred of staff and superintendent as part of professional development opportunities at national conferences and such. Professional development and requested travel, those opportunities, are authorized, budgeted, and approved annually in the district budget by the Board of Education. In the short time that Jonathan Mitchell has led our finance area, he has already made an impact that will further our controls and better them. The Board of Education is asking to inform our excellent monitors as well as lead an effort to review and enhance our internal processes. We will assess our current policies and procedures, review them with our policy committee, and discuss and improve them for the future board meetings. Continuing on with the agenda, we've got several commendations this evening, so I think one of the reasons why you have so many students and many staff here this evening. So first of all, welcome. The first individual that we'd like to acknowledge is Ms. Amy Zentec, who's here with her teacher of their season, and the first group that we'd like to acknowledge is our girls' team, today this evening. the Devils. Where are they sitting? So Amy is a science teacher at the high school, and recently she was awarded the 2019 Celebrate So Katrina and Nafasa are two students here at Greendale High School, and in order to Teachers in Teaching Award at the seventh annual award ceremony on October seventeenth at Concordia University. A total of nine teachers were nominated for this award, and teachers were judged on their qualify for the state tournament, they had to beat a very talented Nicolay team, and ability to be forward-thinking, embrace change, and facilitate innovative learning that they did so in a convincing fashion, winning six-three, six-one. integrates views of technology. At the state tournament, the girls fought valiantly before leaping to the number thirteen This year's theme was "Watch Me 21st Century Learn." I'd like to invite Ms. Zentec out, and congratulations on his accomplishment. seed, Wawa Phillips East, six-one, seventy-six. Katrina was one of only forty-one juniors in the state to qualify for the Division One How about another round of applause? state tournament, and Nafasa was one of only fourteen freshmen. They clearly are two of the elite players in the state, and we're sure that we'll be college and then the welcoming of that additional awards and honors. So congratulations to the latest amateur dual and outstanding year this year. and boys' cross-country teams advanced to state this year. And it's been a while since that's happened. I know we've had individual runners that have qualified for state. Is it, what was last time, Coach, that you know of that?
Neither, or no year of both in their fall. But at the same time, girls were two thousand and five, and boys were seventy-two since our last year.
Your parents may not have been born at the age of seven. So first of all, I'd like to acknowledge the boys' cross-country team. The boys' cross-country team consisted of Theo, Logan, Andrew, Connor, Aaron, Matthew, Jason, Mateo, and Ben. The boys' cross-country team started the season with big-time finishes. They had team finishes of a third, second, first, second, first, third, first, and a first and fourteen-team Woodland Conferences but lost in tiebreaker. They tied for first at sectionals and won that tiebreaker. And the victory in sectionals earned them a team spot at the state meet, where they finished nineteenth out of twenty competing schools in Division One this year. The team had two first team, the team had two first team all-conference honors, a second team, and two third team honors. Congratulations, gentlemen. Although there are three seniors in this group who have been great role models to several boys at the debut level and have shown what hard work and being a team is all about, and Coach is expecting a great 2020 season next year. Congratulations, gentlemen. Coach, your song was very familiar and apt.
and the boys' team qualified for state.
Very well-written.
So this year, the girls' cross-country team consisted of Sarah, Rachel, Maddie, Angelique,
You can come, please come up and give a little bit of advice.
Kelsey, and Ella. The girls' cross-country team started the season with several injuries which impacted the team results for the first month. They then worked very hard, either through cross-training or actual running workouts, and trusted the coaches as to what could be done when the team was healthy. When all the girls competed, the team finished third in the fourteen-team Woodland Conference with one first team all-conference honor and one second team all-conference honor among the girls. The next week, they finished second out of ten teams in sectionals and earned a berth there to the state meet. The girls finished nineteenth out of twenty teams competing in Division One, and with only one senior, the group has a great start for a successful 2020 season. I think that day was a rather cold day up at Wisconsin Rapids, wasn't it? So congratulations, ladies, and best of luck next year. All right, how about one more round of applause for all of our student athletes and our staff? All right, continuing on with the agenda, we are at the point for public comments. And welcome to those who will be speaking this evening, and we'd like to invite you to remind you that school board meetings are for the purpose of carrying on the business of this district, and they are official business meetings held in public. Through school board policy 186, the board allows citizens to make comments by scheduling two opportunities on the agenda to receive citizen comments. And in accordance with the intent of the open meetings law, please be aware that although the Board of Education welcomes comments from the public, it cannot discuss or debate items brought up during public comments. In order to hear from all citizens who wish to speak and to ensure that official business of the district is addressed, board policy sets a time limit for citizen comments. We will be adhering to that policy and its time limits at tonight's meeting. Persons wishing to address the board are asked to come to the podium and state their name and their residence address for the record. Comments are limited to only one time, and individuals who will be speaking will be limited to three minutes or five minutes if representing a group of persons. Citizen comments are limited to a period not to exceed thirty minutes. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Nat Godley, 5331 Melbank Road, and I'm speaking on behalf of Page, Parents Advocating for Greendale Equity. Page members continue to be engaged in the implementation of the Community Action Plan on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, together with members of the school board, district and village employees, students, and other ordinary Greendale residents from across the community. It's through working together like this that we can address the problems of racism, discrimination, and inequity in Greendale. As Page has stated, we believe that the launching of the action plan, along with the change in leadership, offers an opportunity for deeper and more meaningful collaboration, and our experiences across the four implementation teams over the last couple of weeks seems to bear that out. We hope that this will continue and that more community members will join us in this vital work. We're also glad that the search for a permanent superintendent is moving ahead, with the presentations from search firms that occurred last Saturday. I was personally unable to attend, but heard from others that board members asked questions about issues of equity and drew responsive responses from some of the search firm representatives. Page believes that a strong emphasis on recruiting candidates who understand how to transform districts like Greendale around principles of equity and inclusion is vital to an incredible and successful search and hiring process. To achieve this goal, we demand the inclusion of diverse community voices on the search committee. As a grassroots organization that has been advocating for the needs of students of color for over a year now, Page can offer such a voice, and we are proposing that one or more of our members serve on the committee. We are already serving the community with dedication and integrity in the action plan teams. Helping to hire a superintendent to oversee the continuation of the action plan in the schools is a natural extension of that work. There appear to be no bylaws prohibiting community participation, and other districts frequently include committed community members in their hiring process. Page members who serve, like any other community members, would obviously also observe the strict confidentiality and conflict of interest protocols necessary for such an important task. As I've said before, it's a new day for our community, and the word of the day is collaboration. We urge you to accept their offer, to extend this useful collaboration to the search process, adding a crucial perspective to your considerations of what our schools need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Godley. And just as a point of clarification, typically when we've done searches in the past, we've invited all community members, and so we will definitely make sure, and typically there's a couple of times to participate. One is meeting the finalist candidates and getting feedback from all community members, and then the other opportunity is as part of that profile, that superintendent profile. So we'll make sure that you and your group are aware of.
Well, considering your question, community voices on the search committee.
And there is no search committee, is what I'm clarifying, so. Any other questions or comments?
Hello. Oops. My name is Nadine Potkonyak. I live at 8883 Green Meadow Lane. I, first of all, want to thank Kim for returning my call today. My question is in particular regarding the, what I understand is a decision, which is a final decision, not two press charges on the superintendent. So my first question is, is that a done deal? My second question is, why? And here's my understanding of the situation when Kim called me back today, was that the school board made the determination that the superintendent would have to be paid during a period of suspension while charges were filed and something was investigated? I don't really understand how that can be the case when, it's my understanding that he admitted to it and is paying back the money that he spent on a credit card that he didn't have the right to spend for personal use. So I don't understand that decision. Here's the most important thing that I would like to say. I had four children go through this school. They are all now graduated out of college. I have a pharmacist. I have a cardioprofusionist with a master's degree. I have a chemical engineer, and I have a teacher. When my children were here, there were students who were punished in more serious ways for way less serious violations of trust, violations of integrity. So I guess my question to the school board, and this is a real question that I would really like answered, is how can we hold fifteen- and sixteen- and seventeen-year-olds students to a higher standard than the person we are holding at the top as the example of what our district stands for? Here's an example. My last daughter, Yovanka, was on the bowling team. She supposedly attended a party where there was supposedly alcohol. I say supposedly because this all came to light three weeks after the fact happened in Franklin. No proof, no nothing. And she and every other student that was there at this party where there was supposedly alcohol were docked twenty-five percent of their NCAA season, whatever that season was. We have proof. We know this happened. And yet, we're not going to file criminal charges. I think we're setting a horrific example, actually. Thank you.
Thank you for your feedbacks. Please, I ask that we continue and hold a certain amount of decorum.
Last time I checked.
We will need to adhere to that, please.
Last time I checked, applause was decorum. My name is Joe Russ, 16800 West Shadow Drive, New Berlin, representing 559997 Basswood Street. I'll begin by saying thank you for the school district for their article in the Life in the Village magazine regarding the Hauser statue and my donation towards its restoration of my mom's memory. The timing couldn't have been better, as Wednesday would be the one-year anniversary of her passing. She would have been flattered and proud. And while she would have been pleased with the work that was done on the statue, she, like I, would be disgusted by the misspending of the funds by the former superintendent Kiltz and the lack of action and transparency about the issue from you, the school board. Per my open records request of his district credit card statements from the start of his employment to his resignation, I found other expenditures that seemed excessive, if not also for personal use. The most excessive was for $300 at the Capital Grill in Milwaukee in January of this year. Is that amount proper use for taxpayers' money on a stipend meal? Or how about forty-three purchases of coffee shops over the time of his employment? Don't you have coffee in the district offices? If the district was regularly auditing his credit card usage, as the village board does with their expenses, this would have been resolved long before October. I'd like to know who here wasn't doing their job. And I'm looking at a number of you right now, so I'd like to know which one wasn't doing their job. And I'm going to say it was probably Joe. We need a better answer as to why you didn't prosecute Superintendent Kiltz. The excuse today is a good one. Why didn't he get better treatment than a student who, say, stole a computer? Why the double standard? In short, I suspect the amount misspent by Dr. Kiltz has easily exceeded $10,000, and the district attorney should be investigating both him and perhaps the district. And you should be reviewing your policies as to what are appropriate expenditures for his position. I'm sure someone making over $160,000 a year can afford their own coffee. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And again, I would ask you to withhold.
May I?
Please.
Christopher Alessi, 5700 Lakeview Drive. Let me start by first. I am on the board of directors for a couple different nonprofits that are pretty large, so I do know how boards and budgets and checks and balances work. Next, I will say I am very disappointed on how this whole situation was handled. We had admission of guilt. That right there means no real investigation was needed. And I am going to be looking straight at you, Joe, for this whole thing here. There are systems of checks and balances, and there were people that were not doing their job. I have a serious loss of confidence in this board and specifically one or two members. It's amazing how somehow the amount that was found was just under a $10,000 limit, which if he would have went over that $10,000 limit, Mr. Kiltz, or Dr. Kiltz, doesn't really matter, would have gotten a pretty big felony. Any of us, if we would have went and stolen $10 over at Southridge Mall, guess what? We would have had the police call on us and taken to jail. I have a serious, and as well as probably a number of people here, have a serious loss in confidence of this board to even choose an intern superintendent in the time being. I am also thinking that at least one, if not two, members on this board, and you already know who you are, should resign. We need to set an example of Dr. Kiltz, and charges should have been pressed. Instead, he's getting pretty much a slap on the wrist, and I do have to agree with what some of the others have said about students even doing something very minor, such as even skipping school and getting much greater punishments, instead of the misuse and spending. Our taxes are really high enough in this city, and for good reason. We do have one of the best school districts in the state, if not one of the best in the country, especially compared to MPS. And shit like this is not how our schools are going to continue to be the best schools in this state and country. I'm holding myself back, very much so right now. And I will say, because I have had to deal with similar situations as being on the board for some of the nonprofits I work with, how things like this work. And I'm also concerned about retaliation in some manner or form, just for speaking my mind, because that has also happened to me in the past when dealing with similar situations. And I will tell you, my lawyers are better than the school district's lawyers. That's just completely separate right now, because I'm speaking my mind. This needs to be taken care of in a proper manner, and those who are supposed to be keeping an eye on Mr. Kiltz's spending need to also be held accountable because they are not doing their job. Also, not even, there's stuff that jumps out. From, I've looked at some of the open records requests and some of the other spending. Why was he spending so much at Neiman Marcus? That was not part of his repayments. Does anybody hear a thing?
Your three minutes, your three minutes are up. I'd ask you to finish your.
It's just three to five. I'm speaking for at least.
You're speaking as an individual, unless you're speaking as a group, for a group.
I'm speaking for a group of about thirty.
And what is the group?
A group of Greendale residents that I've spoken with.
You're speaking for yourself, and your three minutes are finished. If you could finish your closing statement, please.
My closing statement is, there's lots that even my nine-year-old son, looking at the ledgers, found. He's like, why is he shopping there? We can't even afford to shop there. Not needed. There's nothing he needs at Neiman Marcus, let alone dozens of other locations that were not brought up for repayment.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional comments this evening?
My name is Jerry Siegel, 5856 Ramona. This is on a different subject. This is on the construction after the referendum. My understanding is that the College Park stuff has been pushed back probably a year because they found there were wetlands in the area that was to be constructed. Several questions I have. I've lived in that area since before College Park was built. It's always been swampy back there. I've walked at a number. I have a serious loss of confidence in this board and specifically one or two members. It's amazing how somehow the amount that was found was just under a $10,000 limit, which if he would have went over that $10,000 limit, Mr. Kiltz, or Dr. Kiltz, doesn't really matter, would have gotten a pretty big felony. Any of us, if we would have went and stolen $10 over at Southridge Mall, guess what? We would have had the police call on us and taken to jail. I have a serious, and as well as probably a number of people here, have a serious loss in confidence of this board to even choose an intern superintendent in the time being. I am also thinking that at least one, if not two, members on this board, and you already know who you are, should resign. We need to set an example of Dr. Kiltz, and charges should have been pressed. Instead, he's getting pretty much a slap on the wrist. And I do have to agree with what some of the others have said about students even doing something very minor, such as even skipping school and getting much greater punishments instead of the misuse and spending. Our taxes are really high enough in this city, and for good reason. We do have one of the best school districts in the state, if not one of the best in the country, especially compared to MPS. And shit like this is not how our schools are going to continue to be the best schools in this state and country. I'm holding myself back, very much so right now. And I will say, because I have had to deal with similar situations as being on the board for some of the nonprofits I work with, how things like this work. And I'm also concerned about retaliation in some manner or form, just for speaking my mind, because that has also happened to me in the past when dealing with similar situations. And I will tell you, my lawyers are better than the school district's lawyers. That's just completely separate right now, because I'm speaking my mind. This needs to be taken care of in a proper manner, and those who are supposed to be keeping an eye on Mr. Kiltz's spending need to also be held accountable, because they are not doing their job. Also, not even, there's stuff that jumps out. From, I've looked at some of the open records requests and some of the other spending. Why was he spending so much at Neiman Marcus? That was not part of his repayments. Does anybody hear anything?
Your three minutes, your three minutes are up. I'd ask you to finish your...
It's just three to five. I'm speaking for at least...
You're speaking as an individual, unless you're speaking as a group, for a group.
I'm speaking for a group of about 30.
And what is the group?
A group of Greendale residents that I've spoken with.
You're speaking for yourself, and your three minutes are finished. If you could finish your closing statement, please.
My closing statement is, there's lots that even my nine-year-old son, looking at the ledgers, found. He's like, why is he shopping there? We can't even afford to shop there. Not needed. There's nothing he needs at Neiman Marcus, let alone dozens of other locations that were not brought up for repayment.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional comments this evening?
My name is Jerry Siegel, 5856 Ramona. This is on a different subject. This is on the construction after the referendum. My understanding is that the College Park stuff has been pushed back probably a year because they found there were wetlands in the area that was to be constructed. Several questions I have. I've lived in that area since before College Park was built. It's always been swampy back there. I've walked it a number of times. There's always been a drainage problem. Why didn't the person who designed the school construction notice that when it was designed? Who signed off on the job after the original design was put in? And who signed off from the school board on this thing, knowing that this thing is a faulty thing and couldn't be constructed? Another question is, will the cost increase because it's been pushed back? I've never seen a construction project that the costs go down. Labor goes up, materials go up. I can't believe this cost is going to stay the same. And if it goes up, how much is it going to be extra because it's pushed back a year? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Perhaps we can have someone from the business office respond to you. You are right, the floodplain, the mapping of the floodplains did, were renovated based more recently than what the designs were done. The cost, the referendum, will not change, so the cost of the referendum will stay at about...
What's the individual cost for that particular...
We redesigned some things that will now take place based on additional designing of what will now be required. So we'll have someone follow up with you directly.
Laura Miller, 5234 Lakeside Drive. I think you are going to be discussing safety, school safety, tonight? And I guess my question that I would like to know the answer to during the discussion about the new SRO officer and the original one is whether or not they have anti-bias training? And if they do, when did they get it? And if they don't, are they going to get it? And that's my question.
Thank you. And we can talk about that during the report. Any other comments this evening?
My name is Kendall Curtis of 5318 Olympia Lane, Greendale. I represent a group called The Voice. I speak for over 100 residents throughout Greendale. And a lot of passion going on tonight in regards to Gary Kiltz and what he was doing and what he was spending, and improper spending and things like that. And I see a lot of fire and a lot of fury in regards to that. But speaking for our group, over 100-plus people, I want to say that we've got over 82 years of children and things being at the school where they've been neglected and things like that, minorities where they've been neglected and everything like that. But we're very upset about $10,000 in spending, credit card expenditures and things in regards to that, when we should really be focused on how we're going to move the school district forward in a positive manner to make sure that it's a good situation for all children, no matter what background they are or anything else like that. I'd like to see some fire and some fury and some passion behind how we're going to move forward. The credit card situation is over, he's gone, that's done. Now it's all about the passion for the students and the parents that are in the village of Greendale that want to move forward with the action plan that we have in place and want to make sure that it gets continued and it gets done. As I listen throughout the night, it's, what did he spend? What did he buy? What did he do? What is this? What is that? And what we're talking about is restorative justice. And we're talking about restorative justice for our students, for our families, for everyone here in the village of Greendale. But yet somehow we keep centering around what Mr. Kiltz did. But Mr. Kiltz is gone. And now it's time to move forward for our children that are going to the school and that are trying to do things in a positive manner throughout the village of Greendale. And again, I speak for 100-plus residents, and what we're about is positive change moving forward. What we're about is moving forward with the action plan that we have in place, and we'd like to have more communication when these meetings happen and things like that. They'd like to participate, and they'd like to be a part of it. But if the communication's not coming out, it makes it very difficult for our residents to actually participate in what's happening throughout the meetings and what we're doing in the village of Greendale. And again, we really don't care about Gary Kiltz's spending or whatever he bought or what he's going to buy tomorrow or last week. We really don't care. What we care about is the situation for minorities throughout Greendale, the schools in the village and everything else, and we want to move forward. And again, my name is Kendall Curtis, and I speak for The Voice, clearly over 100-plus people, and we're going to continue moving forward, no matter what. It doesn't matter who the leader is, because there's more than just one person here that directs us in the proper direction. So if we're relying on one individual, then that's a problem. And right now, looking at the table, we can see that we have more than one individual at this table right now. We've got plenty of people that are here to support what we're attempting to do. So we don't want to center around any one individual that may be doing wrong. It may be one individual doing wrong tonight. We're not going to center on that individual. We're going to center on the team. Right now, I'm here, and I'm a minority. And as you look around the room, I certainly don't look like anyone else that's here. And again, we're behind this board, we're behind the school district, and we want to move forward in a positive manner. Let us know how, send us emails, and we will certainly do it. And that concludes my statement.
Thank you for your feedback.
I was not going to speak today, but after that, I felt compelled to. I'm not sure where the 100 people are, because board meetings are every two weeks, so they're more than welcome to come at any time, like the rest of us, that is posted on the district. So that is something that's...
Please...
My name is Annie Merritt.
Thank you.
Sorry. I think the concern is, as a leader, you set the precedent, right? Parents are leaders, so our kids look to us. Teachers are leaders, so the students look to the teachers. So of course, we're going to look at the superintendent who's leading the school district. I think the concern is that we just want to make sure that there's transparency involved so that we have faith in the board and we know when you're saying something to us that is true. I think that's what the majority of the people who came up here is talking about. And that's, we're depending on you guys now to pick a new superintendent. And we want to make sure that you find someone that's going to be a great leader. And in order to do that, we have to have transparency from you all to know that we can trust you. I agree with them as far as the slap on the wrist that I do feel also from Gary Kiltz because of how, you know, my daughter was treated. I think her punishment was way worse, and she didn't do anything. So I'm hoping, as we move forward, that we can do some transparency, that we can listen to the concerns that people have and try to work towards bridging that gap so that we could continue to have a great school district here.
Thank you, Ms. Merritt. Seeing no additional comments, we will continue on with the agenda. Next item on the agenda is approval of the board meeting minutes from November 4th.
I approve the regular meeting minutes from November 4th, 2019, as outlined in Agenda Item 1.1.
I second.
There's been a motion, a second, to approve the regular board meeting minutes of November 4th, 2019. Any further discussion? Then I'm going to call for a roll call vote and look to you, Thor, first.
Yes.
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 And I am yes, motion carries. Next on the agenda, the checks and disbursements.
So included in your packet are current AP expenditures and payroll, provided a cover sheet for monthly financials. Currently, 7.22% of revenue is spent through the month of October. That would be in line with prior years. We're currently at our low point in terms of cash flow until we get our state aid payment, which will be coming up in the beginning of December. And that's the start of our larger revenue disbursements. We get tax, property taxes in January, so that December amount is important for us in terms of our ability to avoid our short-term borrowing. Expenditures that are listed are at 20.96%. That's, again, in line with prior year. So we're at where we would anticipate for this point in the school year.
Okay. Any additional questions? Then I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the checks in the amount of $1,611,967.48, and disbursements in the amount of $1,500,163.23 for a total amount of $3,112,130.71, as outlined in Agenda 4.1.
2.1.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, to approve checks and disbursements, as outlined in Agenda Item 2, of $3,112,130.71. Any further discussion? Then Thor, I'll start with you for a roll call vote.
Yes.
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 And I am yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval of the 2020-2021 school calendar. So this is something that we heard at our last board meeting and reviewed and discussed it. There were no changes at that time, so it's being brought back a second time for approval. So any questions or comments at this time? So it reflects what we talked about last time. There are a couple of changes based on this calendar this year. And then, once we approve it, it'll be shared with the staff and with families of the district. All right. Then I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Really quickly, just confirming that semester one ends on January 15.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Then I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the 2020-21 calendar, as outlined in Agenda now, 4.1.
I second.
There's been a motion, a second, to approve the 2020-2021 school calendar. Any further discussion? Then I call for a roll call vote, starting with you, Thor.
Yes.
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 And I am yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the first trimester department report.
Do you want to reorder the agenda for the safety report first? It's okay. Okay.
So hearing the first trimester department report, hearing from the district office departments, curriculum, people services, HR, business operations, communications, and technology. So this is a first trimester to share out with the board and the community on what has been happening for this first report out. So who's going to...
On the screen? We're going to start with communications. All right. And one of the goal areas that I'm working on this year, actually, that I'll report to you tonight, is about school safety and emergency communication. And that goal involves identifying and training additional staff members to act as backup in case of a wide-scale emergency that would require multiple means of communication, revising the written communication protocol for the district, and also developing a substitute emergency backup document to assist in the case of a staff absence, or what I like to say, in case Kitty goes missing, who can help out in those situations? So this past short cycle, we did some work in identifying the staff members who would have some of the skills that would be necessary to do that backup. School messenger training, access to the various social media methods that we use, and also website training. So we can advance to my second slide. So we considered which staff members, again, have those skills and that experience, consulted with them to secure that they were comfortable in being that, providing that support work, and then also determining what additional skills they might need as far as that training is concerned. So we're all familiar with the traditional methods of communication that we use, the school messenger, the website, but we also want to make sure that our staff is available or ready and able to support in those additional means that we use. And then my next step would be to train additional staff members on those tools and then also develop that, revise that protocol.
All right. Then we'll continue with Julie and the human resources.
My focus area for this trimester is working on developing a diversity recruitment plan with the goal of hiring staff that is reflective of our diverse student population. In this short cycle, we have worked to establish partnerships with local universities to increase the pipeline of students that we have coming into the district, both as student teachers. We've also had conversations around field placements and broadening the universities that we're working with for those opportunities. We have met with UW-Muwaki, Elverno, and UW-Parkside, and I attended a UW-Parkside recruitment fair in October. The diversity recruitment plan will be put into place by January 1, looking to identify additional recruitment vehicles to source more diverse candidates. Currently, we mostly use weekend for our recruitment efforts, so looking to broaden that to reach more diverse candidates. And then also working on interview questions around equity non-negotiables and how we can build that into our hiring process. Any questions on human resources?
So why UW-Parkside?
Their student population is more diverse than some of the other organizations, also looking at locally where it makes sense, where we can, particularly for the student teaching and the field placements, that they would be in this region locally.
Do you have a percentage? I think you said that 40% of their...
That was attendance at the career fair specifically. But their student population is more diverse than some of the other universities. And in talking with them about that, part of it is they have more non-traditional students. Many of them are full-time, are working full-time and returning to school. They have specific goals around their Hispanic student population, looking to, I believe they're at about between 17% to 19% currently, looking to increase that to 25% by 2022, 23. So they have very specific recruitment goals at the university level as well.
Are there any specific websites that you're aware of that you're going to be kind of putting notifications out? Oh, sorry. My bad. Are there any certain different websites that you intend to use, or like search firms? Not search firms, but how are you getting the word out to other locales, I guess?
So that's part of the recruitment plan that I'm working on developing. I have attended some conferences and workshops specifically around diverse candidate recruitment. As you know, some of the challenge that we have in terms of the licensed teacher population in the state of Wisconsin provides challenges around that. So really looking at developing those partnerships earlier at the university, our educators rising program, the MMAC pledge, the regional pledge that we talked about at the last board meeting. So recruitment efforts around that and increasing our knowledge of some of those additional resources that we can utilize. Thank you.
Just want to thank you. I think this is, you know, we heard some community members talk about the action plan earlier, and I think this is a good example of, you know, taking that and now implementing it and continuing the work, the important work that will continue on that. So thank you. People services, Tim.
All right. So my first area of focus that I wanted to share with you guys tonight is around the development of a systematic process and procedure for determining specially-designed physical education needs for students across the district, which then coincides with making a process for determining the amount of FTE that we need to meet those IEP needs related to specially-designed physical education. So really, the short-cycle goal for this time was to meet with staff to determine current caseload numbers and staffing related to specially-designed PE, and also to get a little bit more information about the historical process which has been in place for determining the need for specially-designed PE. So those short-cycle results, I was able to meet with district administrators and staff to gain insight into both the current and past practices, looking back even five, six, seven years ago as to what the practice had been, created current student lists of individuals who received specially-designed PE, and then also have met with staff to receive feedback and insights regarding the development and implementation of the rubric that we have in place for the qualification for specially-designed physical education. So for the next steps, we're going to continue to analyze those data trends over the last five years, have an accurate number of students receiving that specially-designed PE and the amount of minutes written into the IEP, so we have an accurate way to identify current FTE and future FTE needs. But also really dive into that rubric that we have, do some research based on best practice, and identify if we have to modify that rubric at all in using that as a determining factor in qualification for specially-designed PE through the IEP. You know, that's a lot of information, and maybe the first time the board's hearing about specially-designed physical education, but it's basically something that we have written into students' IEPs who have some pretty significant physical challenges that don't necessarily allow them to access the general education curriculum for physical education. So they typically need a smaller environment or more personalized goals written so that they can achieve some physical fitness in their day.
And who's helping them with that? Is that the current physical education teachers, or is that a current special education teacher?
We have physical education teachers that have certification that allows them to provide specially-designed physical education. We also have occupational therapists and physical therapists that help consult on what some of those services would be in our environment.
And when you mentioned that the physical education teachers are certified... And when you mentioned that the physical education teachers are certified for that, is that across all schools, or are we seeing it more kind of focused at elementary schools or the secondary schools?
It's across all of our buildings.
Okay.
And at times, our staff travels to provide those services to meet the needs of the individual students there. So, we're meeting the needs of our kids in their own buildings.
So, what caused you to study this?
It seems as if, over the years, that we've had a bit of an increase in that, so we really want to have our hands around, is this a change in maybe how we're qualifying kids for that service? Do we have increased needs in general for this type of service within the IEPs, just to have a better grasp on what is our future plan for staffing and how we can best meet the needs of students? It's also a way for us to analyze in terms of our inclusive practices, are we truly meeting our kids' needs in the least restrictive environment? So, it's kind of all of that combining, and it's just a good time to take a look at it and make sure that we're all on the same page with how we're qualifying kids and then also how we're providing those services in the long term.
My question was regarding, regarding that, I'm sure it's a scheduling, you know, process that has to go on. Do the students tend to have their FIAD time at the same time that their other peers are having them, or are they being pulled from other classes?
No, it's typically provided during, when their peer group is also receiving physical education. It is a little bit of a juggling act, though, because what caseload is at the start of the year, certain kids may qualify through the course of the year for adaptive PE, so those students are added on, or some students might be dismissed from adaptive PE, so they're pulled off. So, it's kind of a juggling act in terms of the minutes that are provided and what their schedule looks like for the staff. But that's another reason why we want to be really solid on what's the process and how are we identifying kids, so that we're all on the same page with what needs we need to meet.
Thank you.
So, who typically assists? Is it more the special ed aides or special ed teachers?
Typically speaking, it's a paraprofessional that would assist during that time. That's probably the most common example of it. I think there might be instances where other teaching staff may be present for that delivery. Sometimes, it might be our OT or PT that helps support. A lot of it's dependent upon student need, though, depending on what those physical needs are.
Help me understand, does this also include, like, medical 504s, or is it just strictly the IEPs?
So, this is pretty much strictly IEPs at this point. 504 plans are more making accommodations so students can access that general education curriculum, where adaptive PE is more of a direct service, which the 504 wouldn't necessarily provide for.
Thank you, Tim.
Mm-hmm, you bet.
And the next area is Jonathan, is the business services.
So, one of the data measurements we take a look at through the Studer survey is whether or not a student feels safe on the bus. And based on trending, this was identified in our district scorecard as an area of emphasis because we saw a three-year decline in that area. So, really looking at that as a partnership between our business and operations area as well as our building-level teams. So, one of the items we have here is looking at training our drivers on those behavioral expectations, making sure that we're really clear on that, and then making sure that we're available to support those drivers and enforcing those items. Since we have a smaller team, we only have five regular drivers for our five routes, it's easy to get them in a room to have those discussions. So, if you see on that second slide, we were together during the month of August before the school year started, and I led a presentation, was also joined by Tracy Flader, and then you see Marquez Guzman, our finance manager was there as well, and discussing some of those behavioral expectations, talking about anti-bullying items to be looking for, understanding what harassment is, making sure that they understand reporting protocols in the district, but also those strategies to identify and support students, and really starting from creating that safe, supportive environment, you know, greeting those students with a hello when they come in in the morning, and setting the tone for their day. So, we followed that up with visuals, so they've got the behavioral expectations at each building. Here, we have a sample of what that looks like at the elementary school, so what does it mean to be safe, what does it mean to be respectful, and what does it mean to be responsible? And so, as we move forward now, a lot of that work is just being visible and touching base with those drivers to see what's happening on particular routes, and our building-level principals are helping out, especially when a driver says, you know what, things overall are pretty good, but there's this one particular area with some of the expectations where I'm having this struggle. Then, we make sure that we connect them, or we have staff that are coming out on that daily basis. So, really, our focus going forward is to bring that team back together for kind of the formal sit-down and meet and review those behavioral expectations, continue asking for feedback that's on a weekly, daily basis as needed. And really, the last piece is continuing with acknowledgement for positive supports. So, if they're handing out those PBIS or positive behavior tickets, and they're picking out and acknowledging students based on those behavioral expectations, that's going to help us as well in creating that positive culture on the bus.
So, what was the reaction from the company that they were going to go through this training?
Yeah, so they were really excited. So, we're in a consortium with three other school districts, and they took photos of that event and shared that with some of their other leaders in other districts and asked about doing that in the future, having similar conversations, because you just create that part, that visual, like, partnership. Everybody's in the room together, and we're all in it for kids. Every adult that works with kids is really important, and they all need those same baseline training levels.
Plus, you're acknowledging the role, which I'm sure typically, they probably consider themselves like an afterthought in terms of the district, so I think that's really important. I've had a lot of community members discuss issues on the bus, so I'm very pleased that you're looking at this. And then, somewhat anecdotally, from one, my daughter, and another community member, they say that things have changed this year for the better.
Good.
So, you'll be happy to hear that.
Ryan.
All right, so for the first cycle, we are attacking an area on the survey around district management, specifically in technology being a service-oriented department, looking at our help desk tickets. So, we process, on average, a little over 200 technology tickets per month, and we're going to try to figure out how to do that a little better. And so, we've started a help desk feedback survey, so at the conclusion of a ticket, when something is resolved, that user, whoever put it in, would get an email saying, you know, your ticket's closed, here's the results. They also have this little link, and it links to a survey, just an easy one, how the service that you received, how was it? Rate it, what are we doing well, and what can we do better? So, our goal going forward is to collect, hopefully, 25% of that average back, about 54 people, so we can look forward at what we need to focus on this year.
Thank you, Ryan. Kim.
So, the area that I have focused on in the short-cycle goal is increasing the percentage of students and teachers engagement. So, on the Studer survey, there's an engagement score based on seven questions, and last year, the average student response was 3.9, and the scorecard looks to increase that to 4.2. So, to target this very specifically, I'm looking to collect student perception data immediately following a project-based learning experience to see if that experience is impacting their level of engagement in that timeframe. So, I developed a survey that took the seven questions from the Studer survey that comprised the engagement, the student engagement results. These are among three of them, but you get an idea of what it looks like, where they're rating in kid language from not at all to yeah, for sure. So, a couple of the results here, you can see that my teacher challenges me to think. Over 80% of students following a project-based learning experience were saying, yes, that is happening for me in this. And then, you can see on my teacher asks me, how do I learn best? That's a smaller percentage of students that are responding that way. It's important to note that this is based on the response from three groups of students on three different project-based learning, and all of the project-based learning experiences to date have happened at the middle school. So, this is specific feedback from those three projects. In looking at teacher ones, at teachers' project plans, many of them are planned later in the year. So, this is based on a very small subset of data based on the number of plans. So, you can see that. We ended up with a lower overall score on those seven questions than 3.9. So, in that first project, it is not improving the results of their engagement, and so we really need to understand which ones are being scored lowest. So, my teacher challenges me to think, got a relatively high score. My teacher asks me how I learn best, brought the average down. So, the next step in this process is to work with teachers and look at that survey data and say, what happened in the project that you think contributed to this being scored highly? What happened in the project that you think contributed to this being scored a two or three by a large number of students, and what could we do differently in implementing our next project to increase engagement? So, we'll be looking to reflect on those responses, share that with other teachers who have upcoming projects, so that they can implement that feedback within their project implementation.
How do you know about the projects in order to do this?
When I sent out the student survey to teachers in September, I asked them to submit their project. So, when is your project? What is the title of your project? And I'm contacting them as they're getting through those projects. And then, I also sent at that same time, here's a student survey to give your students upon completion of your project. And then, the principals are following up, and when they're seeing those projects that they may not have reported to me, that they're reminding them to report them and give the students the survey.
For the, my teacher asks me how I learn best, is that discussed with ACP activities?
It certainly is. And so, these questions were referring specifically to the project they just experienced. In the survey, it says, thinking only about the project you just completed. And so, it's possible that in that project, it was, there was less student voice and choice in the project selection, in which case, they would score lower on that piece, and that's something that we should talk about because voice and choice is an important component of project-based learning.
All right, thank you very much. I think, is it next month, we'll hear updates from the five buildings?
Correct.
Thank you this evening.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is our safety and security update. Mr. Lotus, I invite you to the table.
Gentlemen, you can leave it on Chromecast. I use Chromecast. We're good.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to speak about the state of the school safety and the report that we always give at this time of year. I have Jeremy Vli here, also one of our SRO officers, and Jeremy is going to join in. Any questions that might happen at the end? Officer Heather Bold was supposed to be here also, but I heard she went home ill from work today, so Jeremy's here representing the school resource officers. For those of you that are savvy and have read my report over the many years I've been giving it, I always use the same last sentence in the introduction, is that safety planning is best served with a measured, even, continuous approach, and our challenge is to find the appropriate balance between sufficient security measures and also a healthy, nurturing, normal school environment. And that's a very hard balance to find, and it ebbs and flows, and it's our constant mission to find that. And as I was looking at this report, a lot of times over the last couple of years, we've been talking a lot about physical safety, you know, how we implement ALIS and some of the things we're doing with our buildings and doors and things like that. And this report has taken a noticeable shift towards psychological safety, which I think marks for us that a lot of good work has been done on some of the baseline physical safety requirements or expectations that we have, and that we're really looking at safety for the whole student, the whole child, and that's what I'm going to hope to talk to you about this evening. So, I think that balance has shifted, and I think it's really appropriate. We've done a lot of hard work, and of course, we continue to look at everything physical about how we respond to crisis and how we create and maintain our buildings and spaces, but there's a lot more that goes into school safety than that side of it. First thing I wanted to talk about, since the last time I was able to talk with you, we've had a couple of things that have happened. I'd like to highlight two of them. One is that we did have a reunification tabletop exercise this year. It replaced what you've normally been seeing, which is the safety walkthrough, which the fire department and the police department joins us, and we walk through our buildings. This year, we decided to use that time and also our resources to hold this tabletop exercise. This was funded by a Department of Justice safety grant, and we were able to bring a consultant in, and basically, we were able to get a lot of school personnel to the table, village, health, Greendale Police Department, Fire Department, all of our parochial schools, many of our churches had a representative there, and we also had just some people from other districts that were kind of onlookers to the process. And what we did is, we tested our response if there was ever a multiple school evacuation or reunification. And we came up with a, obviously, a fictional scenario where there was some sort of a environmental hazard that happened within the confines of Greendale, and we had to move students from schools to evacuation sites. It was not completely true because we did move them in ways that wouldn't have made sense, where we said this bill occurred, but what it did is it got us thinking about moving our students safely out of the school and then reuniting them with their parents. And this is all because, for years, we've talked about, you know, our crisis response plans, and we are going to be doing, we are going to be doing some upgrading of that, and we are going to be implementing over the next couple of years the standard response protocol. And what that is for us is that it basically takes what we had, because we were basing our planning in different scenarios around researched approaches to school safety, but this is a program that has really shown us that some of our communications, some of our responses need to be simplified and also be able to communicate them better with our staff and our students, and the standard response protocol has given us the opportunity to do that. So, we had Trish Kilpin and Sue Williams trained in that, and they were able to help with the implementation of that within the district. So, when we did this tabletop, we had the starting points of the standard response protocol and also a arm of it called the standard reunification method, which is what it sounds like, is moving students and then reuniting them with their families safely. And what we did is, we went through this scenario. And a couple of things that we learned, and the consultant offered some great feedback to us, is, first of all, she was very impressed by the amount of stakeholders that Greendale was able to get to the table, and it was truly impressive and shows the community support and interest in this. But a couple of things that she pointed out, which we definitely are going to have to do, is a wider walkthrough of our reunification sites with our critical staffing. So, we did this in a table in the community room at St. Al's and had a lot of good discussion, a lot of good reflection on it, but that does not replace going to the actual building and taking our critical staff, who'd be working in that building, doing specific tasks in that building, should we ever have to evacuate and reunify. So, conducting those walkthroughs, once we're ready to do so, will happen this school year still. Continue to train our staff on the reunification process. Right now, teachers know how to take a class and where they're going, but beyond that, we need to offer them additional training, and this is, and the standard reunification method's going to allow us to do that. And then, finally, so if we train our administrators and the first responders to this, and then we train our teachers, then obviously, we're going to have a level of communication with all of our parents and the school community also. So, that was a very valuable exercise for us, and it's really helped us to get the next steps of what we're going to do with the upgrades to our safety plans. The other thing that happened this year is, obviously, we added an additional school resource officer. We're only three months into that new structure, and so, simply what I did is I threw some questions out to all of the buildings, the Greendale School buildings, and asked them to respond to a couple of questions. This is premature, for sure, with the amount of time that has happened, that we've actually had two people in this role, and we are going to have to have a much more kind of systematic reflection process and improvement process, probably in a few months here. But some of the things that I collected that really stood out are, there's really an expectation now that there is an officer that's visible and is available and has the time to do more. Obviously, when you're a police officer, even if you're a school resource officer, there are times when you have to go for training. There are times where an officer may have to go to court, and then there are different things that pull them out of a building. And just having, simply having two people allows us to have someone who connects with students and has that skill set mainly available to us, and it really allows the staff to feel able to be confident to propose ideas as far as the officers coming into the classrooms or different ways in which they can support the schools. For example, Jeremy has been invited into Mr. Hubing's government and politics class to talk search and seizure laws this Friday, I believe it is. And so, just the abilities to do that, and I know that he also goes into our independent living and talks about different things, but it really gives the staff really an idea that he is more visible and more available for those types of opportunities. for those types of opportunities. We have flexibility, like I said, for an officer experienced in working with our students and our families to be available. Officer Bowle, Heather, has been able to get into elementary, every elementary practically every day. And that is obviously something that we struggled with when we only had one officer to cover five buildings and the parochial schools. Is not, is we lost some of the visibility at the lower grade levels, and that has really been a noticeable improvement so far. And also, both officers now, we've been able to have officers assist in not only what happens during the school day, but also a lot of the activities that we have outside of the school day, football games and dances and so forth. I'll just close with this part of it. One of the, I think Ms. Miller asked about anti-bias training. And the officers are here during our school day, and they're according to our calendar. And so, I know that at least Jeremy's had the ability to be part of some of the teaching tolerance training that we've had, to speak up in schools and to hear some of the same things that our teachers are hearing as we continue. And our approach would be to continue to involve both officers in any of those types of opportunities, maybe in the questions part of this report. We could ask Jeremy further about any training that the police department, you know, offers that way. But they are schools, we treat them as school staff members. They're on our calendars, and they would be involved in anything that the teachers would be involved with. Moving on here, and like I said, there will be time at the end for questions, and we could talk about some of that. But I booked the second half of the report into physical safety and psychological safety. Obviously, we're continuing with our Alice, our Alice protocols, and those will continue. Alice is not, it's not our program like the standard response protocol. Alice is some, I can't think of the word, approaches that we could use, strategies that we can use as we're keeping students safe. And so, Alice is still, Alice training's taking place in all of our schools. And we continue to establish a protocol that enables every staff member to initiate a lockdown. So, we're not contingent on the principal hearing something and making an announcement. Or we want everybody who's a professional within the school setting to be able to initiate a lockdown and start that process. So, we're continuing to train for that. And one of the things that we do is, since we've put some communication processes in place, we've used, obviously, you know about some of the wedges and the ropes that we use for additional security for the rooms. We have a school safety audit that we do at the beginning of every school year. It's on a Google form. And ask teachers to take a measure of their room, and do your locks work? Do you have something to cover your window? Can you locate your wedge or your rope assembly, depending on what kind of door you have? And take them through all of those things that we want every room to have and make sure that from year to year, those things are in place. With physical safety also, we're obviously opening new spaces in the schools. Part of the work has been the addition and or upgrade of cameras at all of our schools. And a lot of this was part of a Department of Justice grant that we received. And there are many cameras that were recently worked on and improved. With the current construction that's going on, I think some of the safety things that we benefited from are really good communication from the construction companies and to us as far as what to expect ahead of time, so we can think of any safety responses that we would need to have. And then, and real clear calendars of when things are going to happen. And so, when we had to close the back entrance for the orchestra room and the band room construction to start, we got, we had a lot of lead time in order to create new entrances, new exits, and to communicate that with our staff and our students. All the construction workers undergo the Raptor. They have to run their ID through Raptor. And once they are cleared with Raptor, they've created a special sticker that they put on their helmets that say they're part of the Greendale Schools Project with a number. So, if we ever, if someone ever questions what a certain construction worker is doing, they can just reference the number, and there's opportunities to report that. So, all the processes have stayed in place, and even for these construction crews, which you know ebb and flow, will get somebody for a couple of weeks, and then they'll disappear, and then someone else will come. Everybody has to go through Raptor clearance. And then, some continuous improvement opportunities. I talked about the standard response protocol, because I tend to feel that this might be getting a little long right now. I trust that you've read that how some of these things can, it's really just an upgrade to the current plan that we have. It still addresses the same crisis response processes that we had in place. I'd really like to switch over to the psychological safety part. And one of the things that we put into place is sources of strength. And it's an evidence-based prevention for suicide, violence, bullying, substance abuse. It's really by training and supporting peer leaders, caring adults, and that will impact our school through connection, hope, health, and strength. Whenever you hear of a sources of strength, it's about hope, help, and strength. And this grant-initiated program has been successfully implemented at the high school, and very recently, the middle school program has started as planned. And we've been seeing some quicker-than-usual extensions of the program. For example, the high school peer leaders just went down into the elementaries and talked about their "We Belong" campaign, and really took some of the things they did with the high school students and went back into the elementaries to start talking about that also. And it's just a very powerful model. And as the students get better at it, as we get better at it, and start to take advantage of some of the opportunities we have, having that group of students that can lead on that is really, really important. For example, in the aftermath of the student death by suicide that we recently have been working through at the high school here, we were able to talk to the Sources of Strength Campaign Center or the national organization. And they had and were able to activate for us our next campaign, which is going to be Mental Health Awareness Campaign. And it's not something that they had in any of their materials that we originally got, but it's a program that they have in place for schools that have gone through a death and a tragedy like this. And so, that is going to be the next campaign that we talk about. So, as things happen in the school setting, the structure of Sources of Strength is something that we can plug instruction into and plug support into, and it's just a really valuable thing. And like I said, we're really at the beginning of understanding that and recognizing its power. The VRA, the Violence Risk Assessment, I've been talking about that for years. The objective of that is to take any student, individual student situation, learn about that student, learn about the situation, make a plan to keep that student and the school and others safe, and then to support that student. And that's been so successful and that Trish and Sue Williams have been asked to work on at a state level, as the state now is going to have minimum requirements of what every district needs to do for Violence Risk Assessment. And we are truly a leader on that. And I have to really thank Trish and Sue Williams and Colleen McQ-Moore also for helping to work on that, and they are the true leaders for that. And it's a big part of what we do for psychological safety here. And then, the prepare. We've talked about for years that we have the physical safety, we have the Violence Risk Assessment to work with any threats that might be posed to the school. But then, we also have that very important part that is prepare. And prepare is all about facilitating a coordinated, right-sized response to a crisis event. And it's using research-based decisions regarding communication and also actions, so we are responding correctly to reduce student trauma. And we've had the, if you look at the top of page seven on the report, you take a look at the level of school crisis interventions, and I take a look at them closely because that's very small. But the, if you take a look at the universal crisis interventions and how we use prepare in the last couple of weeks at the high school, we have reestablishing social support systems. Part of that was obviously evidenced with the Saturday session we had for students here at the high school. We've had classroom meetings. So, we've had teachers delivering messages and delivering intervention within the classroom settings. And we've also had caregiver trainings for everyone involved, including the chaperones to the recent band trip. If you go on to tier two, you see classroom-based crisis intervention. There are certain classrooms that are asking our people services experts to come in and provide further education and further activities within their classrooms. And we've also, of course, had individual crisis intervention, and the school people services team and many of the professionals across all the buildings were vital in providing that for the high school last week. So, I just wanted to, you know, to say how you've been hearing about prepare, and prepare is one of those things that, you know, you hope you don't have to use some of the direct interventions very often. But when you, when there's a need, it really sets you up for how to address that and to really use evidence-supported interventions to fidelity. And we really, and unfortunately, had the ability to use it in the last week. So, at that point, I'm going to conclude, and thank you for letting me talk a little bit about some of the work that we've been doing with school safety. There's a lot of upcoming work that I've mentioned in here, and that's always the case with school safety. And then, at the next meeting, I'll be back in case there's any questions that come up after this report. And Ms. Vincent's going to be approving our school crisis plans for this year at that time. So, I will take questions. I can bring Jeremy up to the table if you'd like that, too.
I actually did have a question. Jeremy and Officer Bowle, just in terms of when, because you're both here every day, are there substitutes for you if you're ever at one of these trainings or out sick? Or is it just we're down a person for the day?
Well, good evening. We definitely try to handle and manage everything that we can, even if we're at training and stuff. We still have our cell phones, carry them 24 hours a day, and try to deal with that issue. If there is something that's pertinent or severe enough, then we obviously will call and have on-duty officers handle that call for service. And some of them are familiar, or most of them are, at least on the day shift, are familiar with all the administrators in the schools.
Great. What's the biggest improvement you've seen since there is another officer?
I think it's just basically, you know, again, spending the time with the kids, the administration, getting some deeper inroads and roots with the kids, and then obviously the families. And I know like for, I don't want to speak for Heather, but I just know that her, by her being in the elementaries, I think it's a huge advantage for, you know, building those relationships with the young kids.
Thank you.
Thank you for, as per usual, a very thorough report. I have a couple of questions. How do you address the trauma from students and even possibly staff of going through the Alice training and going through the drills? And it's quite easy for the students and staff to internalize, well, geez, where I work actually might not be a safe place. How is that addressed?
I think that, you know that we have a different K six, I'm sorry, K five looks very different than what we do on 612. So, it's more, it's age-appropriate as far as the type of trainings, the type of language that we use with them. The, with any, you know, with any staff, I mean, we've had some staff that, you know, for a variety of reasons have asked the question that you did, and so, we've had opportunities to talk with them one-on-one to answer any questions they have. But I think that the, what we try to do in the trainings, in the Alice trainings, is to give, is to treat them as professionals because they're going to be the ones that are making the decisions. I mean, you can never teach a lockstep response to any crisis like that because it's too fluid. And so, our goal has always been to make them confident that there is, that they know what the initial first move is. And if we can, I mean, all the research says, if they can close a locked door and move students away from that door, you just created a huge difference in what the outcome could be. And then, when you add to that the tools, you add that the barricading, you add the counter strategies that we talk about with students and staff. And I think that even though it's natural, you know, it's natural for that, you know, bring up feelings or maybe fear in some students or staff, I think that's outweighed by the confidence. And we've seen those comments in staff surveys, in the wrap-ups that we do with students after that. I think students are getting kind of used to it now because we're into our third year. The first year, it was like, you know, the response from students was, I feel a lot more confident about what's happening here. We're not just sitting in a corner, you know. And so, I think that the students, we've seen loud and clear that they appreciate that they can be, you know, that we're thinking of this and that they can be active participants in this has made a big difference. And some of our best ideas for continued training come from the students. Well, what happens if it's before school? What happens if it's at lunch? And so, we've been able to address some of those questions also. But I think any fear or, has definitely been outweighed by confidence.
Where I teach at Oak Creek High School, last Friday, there was a complete power outage, not only at our school, but the whole corner of Putes and Howell. So, there was no PA, there were no walkie-talkies, and just as important, no cameras. So, do you have any kind of plan for such a crazy event that could lead to something bad, of course?
Yeah, well, that's not going to happen here. No, the, I mean, just what we provide for the teachers, it really allows them to make classroom-based decisions, you know. And they, you know, and they, and we've gone through the scenarios of what if it's during passing time, or what if you're in this room, and you have a study hall in this room? We've done all of that. And I think it really, if something like that happens, they know the different avenues of communication. For example, each of our staff members puts their cellphone number into Skyward in a certain position and a certain place within Skyward. And so, even if all that went out, we would still have the ability to send a school messenger to their cell phones. And so, there's just backups. I mean, there's the situation where a PA could be used, and not just by the office. Every teacher knows how to access the PA from their rooms from any phone, and they have communication cards in their lanyards that show them how to do that. And so, we just tried to come up with, you know, as much as possible, any contingency for communications, and then they can just work their way down depending on what they're facing. And if they simply have to lock the rooms, put the tools in place, and barricade and keep students safe, then that's what they have to do until they're cleared.
It's also a good question to ask because we have a generator that supports all of our technology infrastructure. So, even when we had the power outage at the middle school, the generators kicked in and certain functions remained so that we could continue with school. So, we'll check if our cameras are on the generator, if that's part of what's generated that way. And then, we'll also, like Steve said, we have alternative communication vehicles that are not dependent on power.
Thank you.
To Officer Vli, do you have other anti-bias training and other training other than what you're receiving through the schools?
I've gone and participated in some CIT training, 40 hours worth. And I went along with Officer Bowle with that CIT Crisis Intervention Training and stuff. So, we always definitely touch on those types of topics and everything like that. I participated in that community building workshop last year, three days. I've taken moral ethics classes. But a lot of our training over my course of 20-plus years in law enforcement, you know, and I worked with the city of Milwaukee for five years. So, we've had a lot of different trainings and stuff like that, which have encompassed or touched on and dealt with diversity and issues.
Thank you.
I like the fact, I'm going to move this back. I like the fact that we're moving into the psychological portion, as you mentioned, and you really outlined this really nice, Steve. Because at the beginning, when all of this was kind of unfolding, it seemed like we were focused mostly on the cameras and the, you know, secure doors and all of that. But the fact that we have such skilled staff, I think, is a tribute to what you're doing here at Greendale. And so, I just wanted to commend you on that and that we're having these conversations that go deeper than just the surface.
Yeah, I also have a comment on that note. Being a student, I've really seen like how throughout the years, how like SOS and the Alice training has really helped improve my environment and really made me and my peers feel safer. So, thank you for that.
Thanks, Megan. Just to add to some of the comments, I attended the Parents' Partner Conference at the beginning of the month, and most of us were there as well. And I think that the peer ambassadors or peer leaders as part of that sources of strength did an excellent job. I think they were strong advocates for why they are part of that program. So, convey the board's thanks to them and to Ms. Kilpin for leading that group. And Jeremy, thank you for being here tonight. I think just having you sit at the table, and as Mr. Lotus said, you participating in all the training and staff training, you're integrating yourself into an important component here at the district. So, thank you for being here and glad to hear that we're treating you just like any other staff member here, as well as Officer Bowle. So, thank you both.
Thank you.
All right. Thor, you have a question?
Coming from the box over in the corner. No, my question was regarding sources of strength. I know that that's kind of our pilot, this is our pilot year, and we're planning to grow that. But could you refresh my memory on kind of how we're planning to scale that? It sounds like, as you mentioned, Steve, that it's kind of scaling. It sounds like, as you mentioned, Steve, that it's kind of scaling even faster than we anticipated. I really appreciated seeing some of the stuff through social media even today with having some of the folks at College Park and having view of their feathers, if you will, but curious how we, that's planning to scale. I can't remember off the top of my head.
If I'm understanding it right, we, we assembled the high school, initial high school team last year and, and were able to do a little bit of work by the end of last year and then came into the school year at the high school, I think, in really good shape, recruited a new class of freshmen and trained that. There is, there is yearly training when the new class comes in and, and so, it keeps, that's, that's not only for them, but it's also refresher for the others. And all along, as far as scaling this, was to bring the high school, you want to get to around 10% of your student body. And I think that you remember back from, that we, we used like social mapping theory to try to have students from all sorts of social groups throughout the school. And we have reached our, our 80 students at the high school and, and we have the correct amount ratio of, of, of staff leaders also with that. And then, at the middle school, they just identified their students and just trained two Fridays ago, I think it was, Thor. And although I wish I knew their exact number, but I bet it approaches 10% of their school size also. And, and we were able to not only run them through a similar training that we do with the high school students last year, Jessica Holspak, who's a, who's a teacher leader in the, in the sources program here, went down and worked with the middle school students also. And so, we're seeing some, some overlap and, and some, and some teachers really taking on leadership roles also because that is ultimately our, our goal and is to create a lot of competent adults and caring adults that can, that can run these types of campaigns and, and be there for students. And going into the elementaries, I'm not sure that was even something that we had thought about, but it became something that the students planned as they went through their campaigns and wanted to run some of the content and the activities past them. And I heard, I heard nothing except how well that those have gone at the elementary. So, I think what it does is, is it, it positions this program to be a really important piece for student advocacy and for psychological safety that students are going to be aware of as they come from the elementary. They might, I mean, they, they'll see it there, then they can live it and be part of it, you know, 612, and I think that's really important. So, it's not a wait until you get to the high school and see if you can be part of this type of thing.
I really appreciate that. I think that's one of the great things that happens in lots of ways across Greendale schools is just the connectivity from kind of near-peer students and engaging across, you know, high school to middle school, middle school to elementary and all different avenues in between. So, that's great. Great to hear that.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you both.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, agenda item 5.3, enrollment and staffing projections. So, Julie, I think this is something that you'll lead us through.
So, at a recent meeting, we talked about our third Friday count and our resident enrollment for this year. This report takes that resident enrollment and rolls it forward and does the projections for future years. So, we use the ASBO, the Association of School Business Officials enrollment software to make our projections. The current projection going into next school year is that we will add an additional 53 resident students in the 2020-21 school year. The enrollment history is provided there. It shows that we have been on a upward trend recently, adding 91 students last school year. When we do the projections, it takes all of that into consideration. So, because we've had such significant increases over the past few years, it is tending to project continued, continuous, that type of in, increases. I ran the scenarios a couple of different ways. They use a five-year mean, a three-year mean, a four-year mean, lows and highs over that period. And so, I ran it a couple of different ways because it's important that we are somewhat conservative in our projections, but we also want to be as accurate as possible. So, I feel pretty confident with the 53. With our housing situation and the limitations of additional building in Greendale, I'm concerned that at some point, we're going to top out on that add and that there will be fewer houses continuing to turn over. I think that's where we're seeing most of our growth currently. So, we need to continue to monitor that and adjust accordingly as to when that might start to plateau out. And we don't see these significant increases year after year after year. In rolling the projections forward into staffing and the impact that that has on staffing, at the elementary level, looking to maintain our same number of staff, same number of sections that we have in the current school year. One of the grade levels that I currently have an asterisk by that we will continue to watch very closely is our kindergarten at College Park is currently in three sections this school year. They are at 49 students and so, we will watch that and monitor that because our class sizes do change at the first through third grade level then with the upper target being 24. So, we'll need to make a decision there if they're at 24, 25, or depending on some, some moves, where they will be. So, we will continue to monitor that. It's obviously still very, very early to make those decisions, but that is an area that I currently have projected at two sections. We have, may have a need for three sections at that first grade level.
Would there be room for a third section?
What does that look like with the?
I believe that's part of the construction, that there will be three kindergarten classrooms in the addition. So, that, yes, that's one of the anticipations is to make space available for that and that, that is on schedule to be completed at the start of the school year.
No, but this is first grade.
Oh, yes. There's, yes, first, second, third, fourth, there is room for three sections.
Okay.
Just requires a slightly different configuration.
I was going to say, there may be.
They have their furniture, but there is definitely space for three classes within the first grade area.
So, you're right. There may be a reconfiguration where today you may have an open or common space in the middle of the two classrooms. That may have to be reconfigured. So, it allows for a little flexibility, but it would require changes.
Yes. The, the other piece of that particularly specific to College Park is with the level of co-teaching and collaboration that happens in that classroom, what that looks like with potentially 24, 25 students as, as opposed to dividing them into three sections. So, again, that's something that we can continue to monitor as we see what happens with the enrollment and make that decision going forward, but it's just something to be aware of that right now we have it flagged as an area to watch. At the middle school, we have stabilized with eight sections per grade level. It's now been several years that we've been at that level with our class size maintained at 26 to 30 in the middle school. So, we would maintain stable staffing at the middle school. The high school enrollment is projected to increase. The incoming freshman class has 244 students in it and our graduating seniors this year is a class of 218. So, there is a, an increase there. So, as I've said many times, this is still very early for us to look at these projections. We will come back in January and talk further about enrollment projections in consideration of our open enrollment and the clearing seats based on our, our projections at that point. And then, in February and March, work more with the staffing and the implications of where our enrollments are at at that time.
How do you predict movement from the parochial schools?
So, the software takes that into consideration by looking at the history of what we've added. Generally, at the sixth grade level, it's about an increase of about 10 residents. That fluctuates. At the high school level, fluctuates a little bit more anywhere between 15 to 20 on average coming in at ninth grade.
Any other questions? So, like Julie said, this is very preliminary. We'll, we'll hear it back again probably in the, in the winter timeframe as we start to do, as the budget starts, budget assumptions start to take shape as well as, as part of the open enrollment offering.
One quick question. I was just curious, on the forecasting model, the forecast is that we have continued growth until 2022, 23. And was kind of just curious what, you know, you mentioned briefly that maybe that was because of, at that point in time, a lot of the houses will have turned over with younger families in them coming through the schools. Is that the primary reason where, where we think that that's going to be the year? Or is there other things that are going into that that really caused that shift in the other direction?
I'll have to look back to, one of the factors that we consider is birth rate and that has been relatively stable, but I'm thinking that that particular year, we may have been down some, which would project somewhat of the decrease, but I can go back and, and look specifically at the, the birth rate going into kindergarten that year. The, the other piece that the software does not project is 4K enrollment. And so, that has been more helpful to us in, when we have those 4K numbers, being able to project then what the kindergarten numbers are going to look like. I've looked at that over a 10-year period and that fluctuates significantly to comparing the birth rate to what we actually have in 4K than what we have in 5K. It seems like on average, we add about 39 students that don't attend our 4K program but come in at kindergarten. And again, that, that fluctuates significantly over the years, but in looking at that 10-year average, that's what I've seen.
And when are we scheduled to hear more about the 4K? I know there's a group looking at 4K full day and then there's also some work being done around 3K. And when, when do we hear from that group?
Go ahead.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at, we did some site visits of area districts that have full-day 4K. We're analyzing the results of that. We have a lot of the work done in regards to research based upon best practice, hey, Thor? So, we're, we're kind of culminating all of that, but then also trying to coincide that conversation with the budget piece of it to see what the, the referral is from that committee on going full-day 4K or not and then also looking at the, the budget impact that would have on the district to provide that. So, we're hoping to have information based upon that in spring. That would give us a good timeframe to have the budget nailed down as to what we could accommodate. Jonathan could probably speak more to that end, but I think it would also allow us to have a better picture of what space is going to look like going into next year as well. A lot of factors go into that conversation like, you know, pre-care, after-care, how many kids we can pull that might not be attending due to it not being a full-day 4K. So, we have a lot of options to really consider. And even within some of the site visits that we had, they have multiple options of how they provide 4K even within their own district. So, we're trying to get all of that info put together to have a conversation about that in spring.
The calendar reports lists that report for May 20.
Okay.
May 20.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, that, that's part of the reason I was asking was I just know that obviously there's, you know, pros and cons and I think we're doing our due diligence to weigh those things, but I know that some of the feedback I've gotten is that potentially Y4K is not a good indicator of what's going to happen at kindergarten. It's not something that some of our residents are taking advantage of because it's a half-day or part-day.
Correct. Yep, that's accurate.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you for that update, Julie. Student board member report. I know you're solo tonight, but Megan, if you have anything that you want to share.
Yeah, so, there's been lots of stuff happening at the high school. As many of you guys know, the band competed at Nationals this weekend and they performed really well. And they didn't make it to semifinals, but they're hoping to do that next year. And the fall play ended a couple of weeks ago and we're going straight into the musical audition process, which is starting this week with learning the song and the dance. And all the orchestra bands and choirs are getting ready for the winter concert and preparing for that. A bunch of sports have just started up as fall sports are wrapping up, as we could see. A lot of people were here tonight. So, basketball, wrestling and other sports are now starting. And for the sources of strength team, we're starting our new We Connect campaign. We just finished the We Belong campaign and around the school, you can see poster boards with the sources of strength wheel in them and there's a feather display by the lunchroom. And then, the Teens with Impact and Student Equity Team members attended the ACLU Social Justice Forum last Monday and they got to attend the workshop and connect with students from other schools and get a fresh perspective on what social justice looks like in the greater Milwaukee community. And yeah, the high school's been pretty busy with term three wrapping up and almost getting to the end of semester one. So, I feel like people are really into the groove now and really working on their academics a lot. Any questions?
Any concern about exams being before Christmas break?
From what I have heard, all students love it that they're before winter break because then they don't have to worry about studying over winter break and losing that knowledge because several students don't study over winter break.
Thank you for sharing that, Megan.
Thank you.
Legislative update this evening?
Yeah, I came across a rare event where the DPI overturned an expulsion. In this story, a letter was sent five days in advance of the expulsion hearing. It came back, returned to sender. The student arrived at school and was told that the expulsion hearing was in an hour. Amazingly, the student arrived there with his mother, but the DPI then overturned it. So, WSB gave a series of recommendations so this doesn't happen to any other school districts, including specifically multiple ways to notify. The Senate Education Committee has a full agenda tomorrow and what I found quite interesting is they are talking about mandating cursive for elementary grades, the objective being that all students are legible, can write cursive legibly by fifth grade. Unfortunately, there is no funding attached to this, so this is yet another unfunded mandate. WSB strongly opposes this because of course, the world is moving away from paper and the enormous amount of instructional time, which it got me thinking, what if any cursive instruction do we have?
We offer cursive in summer school.
Not, nothing during the school year?
Nothing during the school year.
That's been the case for a long time.
Since the 2011 curriculum adoption.
Okay.
Of English Language Arts.
And what surprised me as I looked at it yesterday is there are many cosponsors. So, it appears that the Senate likes this idea.
I did receive a call from the Women's Club asking about our instruction.
Okay.
I don't believe it was the local Women's Club. It was a larger, wider Women's Club organization.
And I, speaking to that point, John, I think our local representative was one of the cosponsors and I don't know if he had any conversation with you, Kim, as Director of Curriculum to find out what we're doing.
No.
Which is unfortunate. Two other bills that I spoke of recently are also going to be heard tomorrow. ID cards that include suicide prevention information and crisis support hotlines and then peer-to-peer suicide prevention where competitive grants would be given out to districts. And this, this kept coming up in the research that I was doing, perhaps a lot of people have already heard about this, that purchase in tobacco, in possession of tobacco products is likely to move from 18 to 21 because obviously tobacco products and vaping impact the schools. So, that is something nearly everybody supports except for, I'm guessing, some teenagers.
All right. Thank you, thank you, John. Any additional board committee updates? All right. Board calendar review, as Megan mentioned, there's the winter sports starting and the fall play just ended and we'll be coming into the season where our winter concerts from all the buildings will be happening. Anything else? The Village has a tree lighting ceremony happening the day after Thanksgiving as well as their Dickens of a Christmas, which will be happening in early December.
December 4th.
December 6th.
Oh, 6?
Sorry.
Early December.
Early December.
All right, we are at the end of the agenda. We were scheduled for a closed session meeting, given that we had one board member that was absent or that attended remotely, we will not be going into closed session. But any additional comments from visitors this evening?
My name is Heather Godley, 5331 Millbank Road, and I just wanted to, I was very interested in hearing the report about transportation and I just wanted to make you aware, I don't know if you knew, but last year I was very worried because one of the school buses was, students were sitting in the aisle, it was three to a seat, and I was very concerned about that. It doesn't seem to be the case this year, but when I followed up with the district, it is apparently state law that three to a seat, even at the high school level, is perfectly acceptable. So, I would, you know, obviously as a district, when we have our contract with the buses, that's not something that we can mandate if it is state law, but as individuals and collectively, I would just urge you to reach out to our elected representatives and let them know that when you have students who have Chromebooks and instruments and, you know, that three to a seat, especially at the middle school and high school level, seems excessive to me.
Thank you for your comments. All right, seeing no additional comments? All right. Seeing no additional comments, we are adjourned. And as I said, we will not be going into closed session tonight, but we will be rescheduling that closed session meeting for this Wednesday. And then our next regular Boards meeting will be on Monday, December second. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, Thor.
Thanks, Thor.